Okay, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. Thank you very much for coming down here to beautiful downtown Springfield and to Pride Lands Park. Before we do anything, I'll introduce myself. My name is Mike Dobbs. I'm with Focus Springfield. And we, this, this is a beautiful place. Look at all this. This was done by Commonwealth Murals, which have done a lot of great murals around our city, beautifying it. And we also really want to thank our host, Ray Berry. This is called Product Placement. Ray Berry of White Line Brewery. No, I'm not going to be drinking on the job, at least not this job. So I'm going to leave that there, okay? Because we need to support local businesses. Okay, so let me explain to you what we're going to be doing here tonight. We're going to be giving each group of candidates three questions. These questions will, they'll answer the same three questions. And I don't know, and they don't know, the questions that will follow the introductory one. Because Focus Springfield is initiating a ball tumbler that's in the back. Steve Carey, the executive director of Focus Springfield, has got the ball tumbler. And we got ping pong balls in there. And we're going to randomly pick questions that have been given to us by Springfield voters. So our first group right here is the Councilor-at-Large incumbents. We have Sean Curran, Jose Delgado, and Tracy Whitfield. The first question I'm going to ask them to answer, and they'll have a minute each. And by the way, Steve, do you want to ring the bell? Steve, there we go. When you hear that, you're going to have like fifteen seconds to end your answer. So, okay, here we go. We'll start with Tracy. Tracy, the first question is a very simple one. Why do you want to run again?
Thank you, Mike. I think I know, not I think, I know I want to run again because I'm making a huge impact on the city of Springfield. I care about this community. I work hard in this community through the work that I do with the Mason Square C3 to keep the community safe, the work that I do with the youth in the community, developing new young leaders to take over my position, because I won't be here forever. I am big on economic development and developing our small businesses in the city of Springfield. We have a lot of work to do. We have another business closing, Plan B. We are losing a lot of our businesses. And there are a lot of resources out there to help them grow and become sustainable and create plans to make them successful. I am born and raised here. My family was raised here. And I know that I will continue to work hard for the community. So please vote for me in November, November 4th exactly. And I will continue to do the hard work that I've been doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Same question, Jose Delgado.
Thank you, Mike Dobbs, and thank you, Focus Springfield. And thank you to everybody that came out tonight. This is important that you guys came here to listen to the candidates. So why am I running again? I ran two years ago because I came on a platform that I wanted to help the city. I've been doing that for the last year and a half, working with my colleagues, chairing the Digital Equity Working Group, making sure that we have access, affordability, and education for digital internet fiber all over the city. I've been working as the chair of the Audit Committee, making sure that we make efficiencies and making sure that we're not messing around with taxpayer dollars, as well as a number of other advocacy things I've done. I was able to get the skills-based hiring ordinance, making sure that anybody who wants a job and opportunity, who has the relevant skill sets, can work for the city and make a living in the city of Springfield. And I still want to make a difference. You know, still young enough, I'm a husband, and I have two kids. And I want to make sure that this city is good enough for them when they become adults.
Okay. Sean Curran, same question.
Thank you, Mike. There's no greater honor to stand shoulder to shoulder with my colleagues and the residents of Springfield and have the opportunity to help march the city of Springfield down the path of progress. And I think we've made a lot of progress the last couple of years. If you think about it, five years ago during the height of COVID, downtown was empty. Tonight, we're here in this beautiful park. There's an energy, there's a vibrancy here. And I think it's really all pointing to the fact that Springfield's making a comeback. Block by block, storefront by storefront, business by business. I think we are on a better path, and I want to be part of that change.
Thank you very much, Sean. Okay, so our first mystery question. Steve Carey will give me the number from the amazing Focus Springfield ball tumbler. I just like saying ball tumbler.
Number five.
Number five. Okay, this is for all of you. How would you attract and retain young professionals in the city? And we'll go in the opposite direction. Sean Curran first, please.
I think the number one thing we have to focus on here in the city of Springfield is really to update our technology. It's 2025. We need a wireless downtown that any young person can access wireless internet here in downtown Springfield. With Microsoft Teams and Zoom, the economy has been transformed. We need to lead the way and really position ourselves as a Mecca for remote work and remote workers from Boston, from New York, from all across the country, so that they can enjoy this great city that we're enjoying tonight.
Okay, Jose.
Thank you, Mike. So this is work that I've done already. So when I graduated in 2008 with my bachelor's degree, I was one of those people that could not find a job to save their life. I graduated in the recession, and I had to volunteer and work for free to show what I can do. And I could not even get a substitute teaching job. So what I want to make sure we do is we make sure that we give opportunities for all Springfield residents. I want to start working collaboratively with the Springfield School Department and making sure that any of those 24,000 kids that are graduating, making sure they have internships, access opportunity with the city of Springfield in a number of fields. I also, back in 2008, signed up with the YPS, Young Professionals of Springfield. I see a bunch of alumni. And we did a lot of work back then to make sure that we retained a young talent that wasn't going to stay here, that was going to Boston, that was going to New York. We need that talent. We need that talent to make sure this city continues to stay creative and that we don't stay on the same old, same old. Opportunities for everybody.
Thank you. And Tracy. For the connected.
Thank you, everyone. Well, thank you for Jose, everyone. So I'm going to continue to do what I've been doing. I bring, I bring access and opportunity. It's not that I'm going to bring access and opportunity to the young folks that go to college here. We always encourage them by putting them on panels, putting them in front of people, teaching them the skill set that they need to develop and grow right here in Springfield, and showing them that there is opportunity in the city of Springfield. So through the Mason Square C3 initiative, through my own campaign and the work that I'm doing, I work with the young people to show them that they are leaders and they can do whatever they want to do in life. I am not going to say, come back and volunteer. Yes, that's a great thing to do, but come back and learn how you can gain generational wealth for your families and be successful. You can do that through owning your own businesses, going and get trades and skill set. Everybody's not a college student, but bring those opportunities right here. There's a lot of resources out here. I have access to them, and I am not afraid to share them. I take them under my wing, and I show them how to do what I've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. What's the next question, Steve? The high-tech Springfield Focus Ball Tumbler. Question number two. Question number two. Tracy, we're going to start with you and then work our way back down. Many public services, including upkeep of terraces, snow removal, and more, are impacted by a lack of investment in personnel for city operations. What would be your plan to restore city staffing levels to full capacity?
Well, I believe the budget has been growing year over year, and we're almost at a billion-dollar budget. We looked at the staff through the budget process that were vacant for years over years, that haven't been used. I don't think there's a huge gap in the staffing needs right now. If you look at the budget, I think Tim Allen has a copy of it, so he can take that budget and show you all the page of where you can see the staffing needs. And he actually, Tim Allen, actually worked with the Finance Department so that we could reduce the budget and not charge taxpayers as much money by filling those positions, because they were positions that were not used. So we really got to do our due diligence and see what the staffing levels are currently.
Thank you. Okay, Jose.
What I would say is we need to do an audit on all the positions. I think there are probably some positions that are probably inefficient, and there are some positions that we don't have enough. I believe that we're losing a lot of people in the city of Springfield. A lot of people point to residency, which I believe we have enough talent in the city to fill a lot of our jobs. But we need to make sure that those folks are getting opportunities, opportunities to learn, and not just the connected folks who are hooking up their cousins and nieces and all that, but the people that live in the city of Springfield. So I think we need to make sure that folks are getting good opportunities there. And we need to look at all of those positions and making sure that we're being as efficient as possible, whether it's pay or whether it's a bad manager. We lose a lot of people due to bad managers. So what are we doing with bad managers and making sure that we're retaining our talent in the city of Springfield?
And Sean.
These are difficult times. The city of Springfield just lost a $20 million federal grant. Next year, we could also be in jeopardy of losing some federal funding due to the administration down in Washington. So city staffing levels is a priority. I think it's something we're all going to work on over the next year. But I will say that the DPW does a fantastic job with the staff they have, but I echo my comments of my colleagues. It's something we need to monitor. But we also need to keep in mind that the new administration in Washington really has been cutting mid-sized cities like Springfield throughout the country.
Those are your three questions. Here are our first group of candidates. Thank you very much. Okay. Here's our next group of candidates. These two gentlemen are challengers for the Councilor-at-Large position. And we've got Justin Hurst, and we have Jay Latori. Okay, gentlemen, it's going to be the same thing as the others. I'm first going to ask you, why are you running? Justin, why are you running, man?
First of all, thank you, Focus Springfield. Thank you, Ray Berry, for everything that you're doing for the community and encouraging civic life here in the city of Springfield. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Justin Hurst. I served on the city council for 10 years. In 2019 and 2020, I was the president of the city council. Two years ago, I ran for mayor of Springfield. Unfortunately, we fell a little short, but I knew I had a lot to continue to give back to the city of Springfield. So I'm running to continue to be that stable voice and that advocate that's pushing back against the status quo and speaking out on the issues that really matter to the residents of Springfield most.
Thank you. Jay.
Thank you so much, Mike. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here and getting engaged and being part of the process. Mike called me Jay. My name is Juan Latori. My friends call me Jay, and I consider you all my friends, so it's great to be here. You know, I'm a lifelong resident of Springfield, and I'm proud to be from Springfield. And I want everyone in Springfield to be proud of where they're from, because we have an incredible city. We have amazing schools. We have first-rate amenities, incredible restaurants, and a lot of wonderful things in our city. But time and time again, I've found that my fellow residents feel disconnected. They don't feel part of the process. They don't feel heard. They're concerned that they can't continue to afford to live here, and they're unsure of whether or not Springfield's the right place for them. And I want to do everything I can to assure them that Springfield is the best place for them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so our first number is?
Number one.
Okay, number one. This is a long one, guys. Springfield College made a payment of just $4,049 to the city of Springfield last fiscal year as something known as a pilot or payment in lieu of taxes. Our current pilot agreements are decades old and very small dollar amounts. Would you support renegotiating these contracts with large entities for additional city revenue to alleviate rising costs on individual homeowners? We're going to go with Jay first.
Thank you, Mike. Well, this one's right up my alley. I've had the pleasure of serving on the pilot subcommittee for more than a year. And we have to remember with nonprofit entities that they are our partners in the community. But you might be surprised to know that almost 30% of the land in the city of Springfield is owned by nonprofits that pay no taxes to the city. And yet, they use essential city services like police, fire, EMS, water, and more. And for the Springfield to grow and to provide relief both to our existing businesses and our taxpayers, it's important that our partners in the nonprofit sector join us. So yes, I would absolutely support that. The city needs a robust pilot policy. We've only got about 19 million of that total valuation participating in pilots out of about $4 billion total in assets. We got to work with them. We can do better.
Thank you. Justin.
The answer is yes. And we actually should have revised the policy a long time ago. At the end of the day, when I go from house to house and I go from business to business, continuously talking to voters, everybody's talking about the rising cost, whether it's taxes, whether it's about putting food on the table, or whether it's about utilities. Everybody is struggling to make ends meet. And when you start to think about these organizations and these colleges and these health centers that are, you know, that are not paying their fair share in taxes, it gets extremely frustrating. And when you're on the council and you're constantly fighting for lower taxes, lower taxes, lower taxes, and you realize that these schools and medical facilities are not paying their fair share, that's a problem. And so absolutely, I would support it. We need to do something about it yesterday.
Okay, so we'll come up with our next question. Question number eight. Number eight. I like this phrase in this question. This was one of our submitted questions. With the silver tsunami imminent, you like that, all of you older folks like me? Silver tsunami imminent. How do we protect local businesses from being bought up by finance and leaving our communities forever when the owners retire? Because obviously, we have a lot of, there's a lot of vacant businesses. We hear stories all the time about businesses leaving. So as the older residents leave, maybe retire, how do we ensure that maybe these businesses survive? I'll give that first to you, Justin.
Appreciate the question. So first of all, I'll take it from the standpoint of, we need to make sure that we're investing in our small businesses. We need to realize that our small businesses are our number-one employer here in the city of Springfield. We need to understand that our small businesses are the heartbeat of our city. And so unless we're investing in our small businesses, that means that we're going to have a number of individuals who ordinarily would have been able to take advantage of some of these jobs that these small businesses would offer that are not able to do so. So at the end of the day, we need to make sure that our large anchor institutions are buying supplies from some of these small businesses. We need to make sure that we, as the city of Springfield, are doing the same. We also need to make sure that our contracts, our municipal contracts, are going to support these small businesses so that they can turn into medium-sized businesses and large businesses and ultimately survive for the long run.
Thank you. Jay.
Great question. You know, there are groups out there that are actively working to help ensure that business owners that are ready to retire have a plan to sell their businesses to a next generation, whether it be someone in their family or someone in the community that wants to pick up that business and continue to run it. And I think there's an opportunity for our Economic Development Department in the city of Springfield to take part in that. I think sometimes in the city of Springfield, our economic development approach is to kind of sit back and wait. You know, we wait for Boston to say that they're going to bring a casino here, or they're going to, you know, bring CRRC, or, you know, the federal government's going to help with Union Station. And I think we need to do a lot more to be proactive. So I think there's an easy solution to that. I think our Economic Development Department needs to put out a clear message and say, if you're ready to sell, let's work with you and connect you.
All right, gentlemen, you're off the hook. Another group of candidates up here. Thank you so much. Candidate Nicole Coakley. So in the efforts of being complete, we're going to ask her three questions. And the first question is, why are you running for city council?
Hi, everybody. I am Nicole Coakley, and I am your 2025 Western Mass Remarkable Woman. So I am running because we need somebody like me that have lived experience, is not afraid to stand up and do what's right for our community. I am tired of individuals showing up just because it's election season and dropping off the scene and showing back up and not taking care of what needs to be done in our community. I'm a mother of five, and I am passionate about the work that I do. So we need people that understand the need in our community and that's not afraid to do what's right. I don't just go with the crowd just because that's following the leader. I am a leader, so I'm going to make sure that when we're voting and when the budget comes out, we're going to make sure that things are being done right.
Thank you. Okay, for our first question for Nicole Coakley. Question number four. Okay. This hasn't been asked before. You get a nice fresh question. In an era of pressing issues, what would you say is the most pressing issue facing Springfield today?
The housing crisis. Where are these families going? We got renters that cannot afford to pay their rent because the rent continues to increase. We have to make sure that we're meeting families where they are. We cannot continue to raise the rent, but our paychecks are not increasing. We still got the same bills that we need to pay with the same little bit of money that we got, but we got to figure it out. So we have to figure out a better way to keep families in their homes. It's important when we talk about the kids. These kids can't focus on school because they worried where they're going to rest their head at when they get home after school. We have to make sure that we're meeting families where they're at and figuring out how can we keep them in their homes. And again, gun violence and making sure that we are really helping our community.
Okay. And your final question is number? Question number two. Question number two. Many public services, including the upkeep of terraces, snow removal, and others, are impacted by a lack of investment in personnel for city operations. If you're elected to the council, what would be your plan to restore city staffing levels to full capacity?
Listen, we got kids out here that need jobs. If we don't got individuals and adults that want these jobs, why not tap into these college students? Why not tap into these high school students and hire them? Let them become and be a part of what we're doing in the city. We need to figure out where these fundings are going. How are we going to pay these individuals that are charging so much, that want to go out there and remove the snow? But we don't have the funding to make sure we can pay them. So we got to tap into something different. If the old way is not working, let's try something new. We cannot continue to do the same old thing and expect change. We got to figure it out together. So having that conversation is very important.
Thank you very much, Nicole. And thank you for sticking around for all of the candidates. That's very admirable. Focus Springfield and I would like to thank Tower Square. We'd also like to thank our host, Ray Berry. And we want to thank all the candidates who decided to participate tonight. We really appreciate it. Okay, so we did contact everybody, but not everybody turned up. But we're going to ask three questions of Mr. Gonzalez, and we'll go from there. So the first one is the one that I've been asking everyone to introduce themselves. Why are you running for Ward One City Council?
Thank you so much for the question, and I want to thank Focus Springfield, and I want to thank everyone for coming out here tonight. And welcome to Ward One. We're right here in the Ward One district, our beautiful Metro Center and our Metro Center Civic Association that does such a great job advocating on behalf of the residents and constituents down here. And to your question, when I think about why I'm running, I think about what the current status quo has been in Ward One. I look at press releases that say things like Riverside Road was paved. And when the constituents call me and they tell me, hey, Josiah, there's still cones and potholes on Riverside Road. I'm not sure what really got done there. So when I, when I say why I'm running, I'm running so that I can provide the necessary advocacy for everyone in Ward One, from Brightwood down to Metro Center, and make a true impact and a difference, not only today, but also for generations to come here in the city of Springfield. Thank you.
Okay, so your first question? We're giving it a real good tumble. We've been getting some repeats. Question number nine. Question number nine. Okay. Josiah, in your ward, what is the most pressing issue that has not yet been resolved?
When I look at Ward One, I think the, one of the most pressing issues is certainly public infrastructure. When I look at the roads that we have, when I look at the unpainted crosswalks that we have, and when I'm out there talking to constituents, our campaign has been to over 3,000 doors. And when I ask people, hey, what are the needs that you see in Ward One and in the district? I have some ideas. I have a platform. But what do you think we need in Ward One? People tell me, hey, Josiah, this street hasn't been paved in years. I've called the 311 number, and this tree hasn't been taken down, but it's a city tree. So again, I think it's going to public infrastructure as the most pressing need, not only in Ward One, but across the city of Springfield as well.
And our next and final question for Josiah? Question number seven. And this came from a Springfield resident. What do you think the city should do to give residents on Election Day a larger voice than the developers and insiders who make campaign contributions? Oh, this is a good one. Do you support residents having a bigger say in the budget-making process? So there's interlocking questions there, Josiah.
Absolutely. As it relates to voter turnout and really working with folks to come out and have a voice, I think one of the critical things that we need to look at is our Election Commission Office in terms of what they're doing to engage voters prior to Election Day. I think we have great amount of people that are doing some great work in terms of political activism within the ward that are reminding people to come out and vote. But also, we have an office sitting at City Hall that throughout the year is not running elections that could really be doing a better job in terms of voter turnout. And then what was the second part of your question?
Second part, do you support residents having a bigger say in the budget-making process?
Absolutely. I think this is something that's important. I know that when I've served on the Budget and Finance Subcommittee on the Springfield School Committee, we've done listening sessions out throughout the city in order to get some input from people, you know, what do you think about what we're putting in the budget? And as the next city councilor for Ward One, it would be no different. The input, the valuable input of what people think about where the dollars and the cents are going here in the city of Springfield. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Josiah, for your answers. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, our next two candidates are running unimposed, unopposed in their respective wards. Michael Fenton, who is the president of the city council, represents Ward Two. Zeta Govan is representing Ward Eight. So the first question to our incumbents, why are you running again? Zeta, you first.
I'm running because there's no one else running. So I'm going to continue doing the work that I've been doing for the last 30 years in the city of Springfield, more than 30 years. But on the city council, I've been here for about four years now. And I think that with my dedication, my commitment to the city, I want to continue to help our constituents regardless of where they live. They don't have to live in Ward Eight for me to be able to help them. So they reach out to me, and that's what I do. And that's what I want to continue to do. Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
You know, I want to echo a little bit of what Zeta said. For me, the reason that I'm running again, and I've been on the city council now for 16 years, is the same reason I got involved in the first place, which is I love this city. It's the city where I was born and raised. I've always lived here, and I've always felt and continue to believe that government service is a calling. It's an honorable calling, and it offers an opportunity to connect with neighbors, with residents, with business owners, with all the folks who are here tonight and were a part of putting this great event together to make our community a better place. And so that's why I'm honored and humbled to have been chosen to serve for the past many years and look forward to many more years to come, hopefully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Steve, what's our first question? Question number one. Okay, this is a good one. And as, folks, because we're doing this at random, we may be repeating questions, but that's great because it gives you answers from multiple candidates. So once again, Springfield College made a payment of just $4,049 to the city of Springfield last fiscal year, which is, of course, known as a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes. Our current pilot agreements are decades old and very small dollar amounts. Would you support renegotiating these contracts with large entities for additional city revenue to alleviate rising costs on individual homeowners? We'll go with you, Mike, first on that.
Sure. So pilot agreements are completely discretionary, so we have to build good coalitions and relationships with our nonprofit sector to be able to enter into them. The city doesn't have the legal ability to force pilot programs upon our nonprofit and state and federal property owners. But I've long felt, going back to the time that I worked then with Council President Jose Tesado, on an initiative to revisit those agreements and work with our community partners to ask them to pay more of their fair share, because there's no doubt that a lot of those agreements are outdated, and our nonprofit sector does utilize services in the same way that our residents and private sector do.
Okay, Zeta. Okay, Zeta, same question.
I agree with my president. I was in the pilot subcommittee meeting the other day, and that's exactly what I said. You know, these organizations use our resources, so why shouldn't they pay a little bit more? And I know it's a voluntary program, so I agree with Council Fenton that we should develop relationships with these entities like Springfield College, some of the bigger nonprofits that are making a lot of money, and that's okay for them to do, but they should also be able to reciprocate and pay into our city for our city resources. Thank you.
Just to add, that Council Victor Davila is here, I'm sure he'll probably be speaking later tonight. I appointed him to chair that pilot subcommittee to look at this very question, and I know the question's already come up a couple of times tonight, but he and his committee and the volunteers that are serving on it have done a lot of good work to look into this question for us.
Thank you. Okay, and for the final question for these candidates?
Question number five.
Question number five. Again, we've had this before, but it is very important. How would you attract and retain young professionals in the city? Zeta, you have that first.
Thank you. That's a very important question because, as we said, the silver tsunami is coming, and we need to keep our young people here, we need to attract young people here. And I think one of the main things that we're going to do that is by having affordable housing. We have a very low housing property resource, and we need to increase that, and we need to make more affordable housing. We have vacant buildings all over the city that could be made into apartments for young professionals that might want to start off in the city. They decide they might like it and stay here and buy a house somewhere. It needs to be affordable, and that's something that I think we really need to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, and I think to attract and retain young professionals in the city, we have to have a comprehensive approach. It is housing, it's affordable housing, it's also market-rate housing, it's the education system, it's our public safety, it's economic development, it's creating a nightlife. And I've been council president for the last two years and three years, a decade ago, and the first go-round, I appointed a young professional committee that did a lot of work in this space, and some of those folks are out here tonight, some of them are running for office, and there was a lot of good that was created from that committee and efforts to focus energies on retaining and attracting young professional talent. One of the things that still continues on to this day is Restaurant Week, and so we need to continue to focus on those items.
Thank you much, folks.
You guys.
And we're gonna get our next group of candidates up here. Okay, so Willie Naylor, Beverly Savage, and Kenneth Barnett are all candidates that are challenging incumbent Milo Brown for Ward Four. So let me ask you that question I ask everybody. Why are you running? We'll go with Mr. Naylor first. Why are you running, sir?
I feel inspired to bring new leadership to Ward Four. It's time for new leadership. I just came back from the land of my ancestors down in Mississippi, in the place where Mary Fannie Lou Hamer walked and Medgar Evers, and I was inspired to remember why we run. This is not an office of entitlement to maintain the status quo, but this is an office where we walk with purpose to create legacy in order to be effective, to bring about change, and I see that change is needed in Ward Four. That's the place where my family is. I've been in that community for all of my life. I've lived at the address where I live for 38 years, and it's time, it's time for change.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Beverly Savage?
I as well as running for Ward Four City Council because I believe we need new leadership, and we need someone that can navigate strategically to progress. And I know we don't like to mention the one big beautiful bill that President Trump passed, but there are secrets inside that bill that we can extract from and bring monies to our communities, and I believe I'm the candidate to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Kenneth Barnett. Thank you. Appreciate that. The reason I'm running is simply to continue the work that I've done. I believe we don't need an office necessarily to do the work. If there's work to be done, we need to do that, and having been the president of the Bay Area Neighborhood Council, working in Old Hill, Upper Hill, I've done the work, and I've got a proven record. You can't say to anybody, where's Kenneth Barnett from? Where'd he come from? No, I've been doing the work. Again, working as a president of the Bay Area Neighborhood Council, I went to school here, graduated from AIC, have an accounting degree, I work for the Hampton County Sheriff's Department, I work with, you know, our family members that struggle with drugs, so struggle with abuse and addictions, and I'm working with them to help them realize that there's other choices that they can make. I'm Kenneth Barnett, and I've done the job, and I want to continue doing it on a larger scale throughout the city.
Okay, thank you very much, candidates. All right, so we're gonna get our first question here from Steve Carey.
Question number one.
Question number one. Okay, this is a question that's getting a lot of play here, but it's a real good one. Springfield College made a payment of just $4,049 to the city of Springfield last fiscal year, as something known as a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes. Our current pilot agreements are decades old and very small dollar amounts. Would you support renegotiating these contracts with large entities for additional city revenue to alleviate rising costs on individual homeowners? And we'll start that with Mr. Barnett.
Thank you, that is a huge issue for me. Yes, I went to American International College, but it's just so important that we're, there's not a fair exchange. We're giving, as has been heard, billions of dollars worth of geographical land, footprints in our community in Ward Four, and it's just, I believe they should be doing a whole lot more. $4,000 is just absolutely ridiculous. So to your question about renegotiating, coming back to the table, absolutely, that's one of the first things I would do, because it's not just financially, but it's also education. Let's think outside the box and say, you know what, we're giving you X amount of dollars, why aren't you providing 10 scholarships, 20 scholarships per college? To better educate our individuals, like myself, Ray Berry's a great example, getting his education from American International College, and look at him today, leading.
Okay, Ms. Savage, what would your answer be?
Absolutely, to renegotiate. We are up against economic challenges, and to not go back and renegotiate what we can renegotiate would be absurd. So yes, we should. It would be an economic strategy for the city of Springfield to do so, and I believe all the players, all the partners, all the nonprofit organizations that would be invited to that table would understand and cooperate.
Thank you. Mr. Naylor?
Thank you for the question. I would certainly lead with fiscal wisdom. I would consider revisiting that particular protocol, that mandate, or that policy, but I would also consider each entity, each organization, because you have faith-based entities as well, and they often give more to the community than what money can pay for. So, you know, you have to enter into that with wisdom, you know. Now, the Springfield College and some of our educational institutions, yes, they can give out some scholarships, and they need to do that, and so each of the entities should be considered as, according to what they do, and be rated according to the quality and quantity of their service.
Thank you, sir. All right, our next question. The tumbler is spinning.
Number five.
Number five, again, something that we've talked about before, but it's very much an issue. How would you attract and retain young professionals in the city? Mr. Naylor goes first.
Thank you for the question. I would certainly look at training and education opportunities for our young people. One thing I would emphasize is AI and computer education for our young folks so that they can create new careers in our community. Sometimes, some of these careers that are here now are not sustainable for our young people, and so our institutions, educational institutions like STIC and AIC should offer career training and education opportunities that go in line with the innovative workforce that's being developed on the scene now, so that that would encourage our young folks to stay and invest in our city.
Thank you. Beverly Savage?
For our young people, they are like us, they are in all different social classes. So how do we bring them all together or together in a collaborative way to say, you can prosper too in the city of Springfield? So programs, not just training programs for the low-income, moderate-income, but our college students, how do we activate them to join in the challenge of keeping our young people here and inspiring them? So I believe it's a collaborative effort with, not with all young people of every social class, just like it is in this diverse community of Springfield, Massachusetts, for all of us to be together, coming from all different social classes and diversity.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barnett?
How do we retain students? We retain students by making sure that housing is fair and equitable. We retain students by allowing great health services to them and to their families because they have young families, and so education for their children is a great need, and there's a change that needs to be done there. So that's where I'd start off with, education, with affordable housing as well. Right now, we've got, for example, the Firestone Building that has been empty for, I don't know, 20-plus years, and that type of housing, the availability there, that should go to some of our students, some graduating students that want to stay here, but housing is not equitable nor fair. So I'd start there with housing, and again, with health services, make it affordable.
And ladies and gentlemen, that was your last question. Thank you very much. So as you can see, like I said before, all the candidates were invited, some of them could not come, but let's talk to Edward Nunez about some of his statements and his opinions. First of all, why are you running?
Great question. Why am I running? I'm running because I want to continue to serve this community. I've been putting in work in this community for over 20 years. Many of you know me from having worked at Freedom Credit Union. In 2006, I was tasked with creating a financial literacy program, and that we did, where we taught financial concepts to school-aged students. In 2008, most of you may not remember this because it was a long time ago, but Putnam was a Level Four underperforming school. I was on the governance board, I was vice chair. There was a gentleman by the name of Kevin McCatskill, who was the principal of Putnam at the time. Kevin was a great guy. He was actually my guidance counselor in school. Fred Carrier, who was in charge of the shops, approached me because they were building this new school, and they wanted to model it like the Worcester concept, to have a branch, to have a high school branch in there, a high school bank in there. So they approached me, I joined the committee, we put out an RFP to the city, no one responded because it's really, the city does not make it very easy to do business with them, unfortunately, right? So we sent it out a second time, no one responded. The third time, I approached Barry Crosby, the president, and I said, Barry, this has to be us, we gotta go into Putnam, we gotta open up a branch there. Seconds later, we've hired 51 kids to date, put them through the internship program, kids like Devon Witsett, David Bass, Justin Stewart, they're all, and that's one thing that I'm most proud of because we put money in these kids' pockets. Did I get double time because my guy's not here? No?
I like his spirit, but I'm going to crush it, no. But you are all by yourself, so that's a good thing. Okay, what is Mr. Nunez's next question, Steve?
Question number six.
Question number six, okay. Springfield's charter is outdated and has caused friction between the mayor and the city council for decades, including a local version of a constitutional crisis where court-ordered implementation of city council ordinances has not been completed in violation of the law and the charter. Are you willing to support a charter review commission to bring back some order and cooperation in Springfield?
Absolutely, it's a system of checks and balances, that's what we should have here in this community, right? Yes, we have the mayor, but we have the city council, and in all forms of government, whether it's on the federal level, the state level, or the local level, you have a systems of checks and balances, and you have it for a reason, right? Because you want to represent the people. To me, the city councilors are the voice of the people. We should be out here, listening to the concerns of this community, but also representing their voices and advocating for them. And when you take a system and you put power, too much power, in one person's hand, it's never a good thing. That's why you have to have the systems of checks and balances to kind of keep things in check and keep things in balances. So yes, I would.
Thank you, sir. All right, and your final question is?
Question number three.
Question number three. All right, now, we accepted this question because everybody is thinking about it, but I wanted to be clear that unfortunately, our city council really has little power to determine where the next courthouse is going to be located, and as well, what to do with the present courthouse. However, I'd like to find out from you, Mr. Nunez, if you have any ideas about what we should do with the current courthouse. Should it be rehabilitated? Should it be knocked down? Something else, what do you think?
From what I'm hearing, it's cost prohibitive to do anything there. I mean, if you look at the condition of the courthouse right now, it's in pretty bad condition, unfortunately, and I just don't think it's going to be cost-conducive to allow us to kind of rehab that facility. I think it's just beyond repair at this point.
All right, Mr. Nunez, thank you very much for answering the questions and participating. Okay. We're gonna modify our opening question just a tad because we have an incumbent and we have a challenger. All right. So Victor, I'm going to have you go first and answer the question. Why are you running for reelection?
Well, good afternoon, Mike. My name is Springfield City Council Davila, and first of all, I want to say thank you, Mike, for putting this together and to Focus Springfield for this event, and to you, the viewer at home, for allowing us into your living room so that we can tell you about the issues that are important and issues that are important to you, issues like reducing the cost of living, crime, and litter. Mike, I'm running for the Springfield City Council because this is really a great city. Mike, when I came to Springfield, I was 15 years old, I spoke no English whatsoever, and we were homeless. I bounced from shelter to shelter, and Springfield has made me the man and the person that I am. I'm running for reelection for the Springfield City Council because it's the least that I can do to give back to this great city.
Thank you. Mary? The question to you is, why are you running?
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, I'm Attorney Mary Johnson, and I thank you so much, everyone, for coming out today, thank you for all the viewers at home. I'm really excited to be here and to share about our campaign and our movement to bring a new voice to Ward Six. The Ward Six issues that we see here in Springfield are ongoing. We have, I'm running because I'm a mother, I'm raising my kids here in Springfield, and I'm an attorney, a public interest lawyer now for over a decade. I know the issues that face the residents here of Springfield, and I know what's happening in Ward Six, and I believe that we need a new voice, and we need new ideas. The old ideas just simply aren't working. We still have trash and litter all over the place in our businesses and in our sidewalks and streets, and I look forward to explaining more.
Thanks very much. Okay, so now we're gonna come up with our first question for these two candidates.
Question number seven.
Question number seven. Okay, we've had this once before, but it's a good one. Do you think the city should give residents on Election Day a larger voice than the developers and insiders who make campaign contributions? And do you support residents having a bigger say in the budget-making process? Mary, we'll go to you first.
Thank you very much. I'd first like to say, you know, thank you to the Election Commission for all of the hard work that they do. I believe that the people who work for the city of Springfield are doing an incredible job of outreach and making sure that residents have the resources job of outreach and making sure that residents have the resources that they need, whether they're voting by mail, or whether they're going to be voting in person or early. I would love to see civic engagement increase, and I know that that's something that we all share here in the city, in all residents. But civic engagement is very broad. Civic engagement includes volunteerism, it includes coming out to events like this, and it includes voting. And so, I do think, in answer to the question, that we do need more transparency in the budget process itself. It's available online to read the entire budget. It's, I believe it was held up earlier, it's many, many pages long. And so, being able to have a way to explain that to people, but that's a city councillor's job. I'm going to go out and explain that and meet people where they're at. That's what our campaign is all about.
Okay. Victor, it would be the same question.
Thank you, Mike. Absolutely. Yes, I always should be more transparent, transparent in city government, and people should know where the money is coming from. So, absolutely. I also have to say that, in terms of people knowing what's happening here in the city of Springfield as it relates to taxes, one of the things that I'm going to suggest for next year is that we bring back the finance committee, going back when it's time to do the property tax, to talk to the people, to tell them exactly what's going on. Same thing for the budget. The city council and the mayor's office has got to be more out in the community. Also, I have to say, we got in litter. Last year, I had the pleasure of creating the litter committee, and we recommended many recommendations. And I'm happy to say that one of those recommendations was accepted among many others. And one of those, and the one that I'm proud of, is that they are now teaching kids in elementary school about litter, the environment, and the impact it has littered on the environment. And we have Roka out there, who's out there picking up trash, so litter is being slowly addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. And your, and the final question?
Question number one.
Number one again, but it's important. Springfield College made a payment of just $4,049 to the city of Springfield last fiscal year as something known as a pilot, or a payment in lieu of taxes. Our current pilot agreements are decades old and have very small dollar amounts. Would you support renegotiating these contracts with large entities for additional city revenue to alleviate rising costs on individual homeowners? And Victor, you have it first.
Thank you, Mike. So, I am the chair of the pilot committee, and I suggested that committee to the council president Fenton, who was here a little while ago. And we did that, because the city absolutely needs money. And I say it again, we need money in the city of Springfield. Do you know what the total property tax exempt is in the city of Springfield? It's $4.8 billion of property exempt. We only getting back $19 million in payments of lower taxes, less than 1%. Springfield College made a payment of $4,000. That is the beginning of a long, hard work that my committee has been doing, and I see that as a win. And we are going to continue to do so. We're going to continue knocking on the doors, and they will open the door, and we will get the money, the revenue, that we need to continue providing the services we should deserve.
Thank you. And Mary?
Thank you. I'm very excited to answer this question, because my website, votemaryjohnson.com, actually addresses the pilot question, addresses the question of payment in lieu of taxes contracts that the city of Springfield can be engaging with, with colleges that have property and use services here in Springfield, and also with other nonprofit organizations. Now, unfortunately, this is something that really should have already been going on. And so, the idea that, I'm really glad that this question is here, because this is something we need to have been talking about yesterday. This is, the pilot programs could bring conservatively about $10 million in revenue every year to the city of Springfield. That is far and above any amount that you could get on, for example, collected back fines and litter. This is something we are looking at, and I'm really excited for the question. It's a way to bring profits and revenue forward in Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And please, thank these two candidates for participating here tonight. Okay, and this is, of course, incumbent city councillor from Ward Seven, Tim Allen. You're actually carrying the budget with you. This is a man dedicated to his budget, dedicated to his work. Look at this. Okay.
Can you hear me? Am I doing this right?
Yeah, you're doing that just fine. Okay, so, Tim, again, the opening question, why are you running for reelection?
I'm running for reelection, because I want to continue the strong financial performance we've had as a city since I first ran, which was in 2009. Took office in 2010. That was right after the control board was here. The control board was here to help Springfield manage its finances from 2004 to 2009. I and others, like Mike Fenton and Melvin Edwards, we took office in January of 2010, and people didn't believe that the city could manage its own finances, because it had not been a strong performance by the city before then. I'm proud to be part of the team that has managed its own finances for that entire time, and our finances are in excellent shape compared to where they were then, and we haven't needed any help from anybody else. It's the mayor and the city council and the administration have managed the finances. We now have our highest bond rating that we've ever had. It's AA minus.
That's your time? Okay, so, Steve, what's our first question for Tim Allen?
Question number six.
Number six. Okay. Tim, how would you attract and retain young professionals to the city of Springfield?
One of the ways I do it is I teach young professionals. I teach at Springfield College and have taught there for the last 15 years. In fact, the same amount of time that I've been on the council, I've been teaching at Springfield College. I teach in the business department, trying to create opportunities, good majors, good professional training for our students. Something I do, and the class will start next week, is something I do there, and I do that also in the community as well. We need to have, you know, good programs, we need to develop stronger internship programs, but we need to be there, providing a good economic environment where businesses can begin to thrive, and we can, you know, provide opportunities for the people that graduate and that we'd like to see stay in Springfield.
Okay. And Tim's final question, Steve?
Another question number one.
Okay, so this is the pilot question.
Final question.
It's an important question, and you've heard the question over and over, but Springfield College made a payment of just $4,049 to the city of Springfield last year as part of their pilot program. The pilot programs are decades old, and would you support renegotiating these contracts with large entities to take some of the burden off of homeowners?
There's no doubt that we should look at the pilot programs and be more aware of them. However, I will say, at the beginning of my term on the council, 15-years ago, we undertook a pilot initiative. Nothing ever came of it, there were no new programs. It's very difficult to talk about it. Springfield College, where I teach, had a layoff of 26 people last summer, and it's had more financial problems than they'd ever had before. So, it's good to talk about it, and there should be a dialogue back and forth about it, but there needs to be an understanding, it's really a partnership between the colleges and the nonprofits and the city, and understanding the strengths of both. A lot of my students that I'll teach next week will be contributing to Springfield in other ways, through internships, through, you know, programs at local schools, like, you know, Brookings School and, you know, DeBerry, et cetera. The college does a lot of...
We got time, time there. Tim, thanks very much. All right, this is the last of our city council candidates. We are going to switch to school committee, and the first group will be school committee members at large.